To discuss the ESCO project before we get into our regular board meeting. So, Mike Lang from Providence will update us on the ESCO project.
Yeah, sure. Hi. Hello, everyone. Good to see everyone. Sorry, we missed out on Thursday night with the snow. A little snowstorm up here and down our way. Wanted to give you an update of where we are to date. I understand Mr. Krasinski will pull up the schedule and you all should have the printout of the best and final offers that we asked each of the four ESCOs that submitted proposals here to the district to send back to us in mid-October. This would constitute what we had talked about, an apples-to-apples look. So, there's the schedule up on the screen. Let's start with the schedule and then we can get into the numbers and then answer any questions you may have. So, basically, like I said, mid-October, the apples-to-apples comparison, that's this best-and-final offer spreadsheet you have of, from the four ESCOs for all the different schools and all the different measures that were tasked each of them. We're here tonight for a recommendation to the school board in this meeting and then hopeful that you'll consider approving the recommendation later on this evening at your school board. At that time, if it is, if something is approved this evening, over the next few weeks, we'll spend time with the district and the board here to finalize the scope with the recommended ESCO and contract, obviously, with your solicitor and then hope to have something signed at the end of mid-December and get started with the project in January. Anybody have any questions on the schedule? Okay. So, basically, that hopefully you've had some time to look over this, print out, digest it. Obviously, a lot of numbers. Maybe if you could go to the final page, Bob. Each, each school is, is in the first column here and then the ESCOs scroll across from, from left to right. Looks like we don't have the headers on it, but the first, the first, yeah, you can see, sorry, there. The first column would be CM3, the second column is Siemens, third Honeywell, and the fourth column ESG. We asked these folks to give us their best-and-final pricing and savings estimates for each facility by each measure and then remember there was a priority level assigned through the ICS report that we did a long time ago here, priority ones and priority twos. So, at the very bottom, and what we could, as much apples-to-apples as we can get is this light blue line where basically we're saying, here are the total ECMs, energy conservation measures. That's lighting interior, lighting exterior, building envelope improvements and controls recommissioning. That's trying to fix up the controls as much as possible in the building. Those generate the bulk of the savings, ninety-some percent of the savings here. Then you have your priority one, which is the bulk of the cost, but those are the boilers, the chillers, the unit ventilators, the rooftop units, so on and so forth, the really mechanical, heavy lifting pieces of equipment in your district that are failing you right now and that need to be replaced. As you can see, when you sum up the ECMs and the priority ones, CM3 has a cost of about 7.8 million with savings of $325,000. You've got Siemens at 8.9, almost nine. Oh, I'm sorry. That's the simple payback, 24 years. Just keep that in mind. It's just 24 years. A bulk of that payback is because of that heavy mechanical equipment. It's almost all cost. There's not a lot of savings that's brought out of a new boiler. It's just a piece of equipment that needs to be replaced, almost capital expense. Now, there's some efficiencies, obviously. As you can see, there's some savings associated with those priority ones, but the reason that it's such a high payback, quote-unquote, is because there's so much capital involved in that 7.8 million and then so in the Siemens, the 8.9, who's next? Honeywell, over 10, ESG, over 10. So, that light blue line represents as much apples-and-apples as we could get. Obviously, you have a lot more items, priority two. Most of the firms submitted priority two, cost and savings. One firm did not submit priority two. Siemens did not submit priority two, cost and savings. And then there's some roofing at the very bottom here, some roofing upgrades that could be handled here. Again, three of the four firms submitted roofing numbers. That way you have a lot of detail for you. So, at this point, just kind of flip it over to you folks for some, any kind of questions or anything that you'd like to ask us.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Bobby. With these numbers here, Bobby, or Bobby and Tony, what, what do these numbers do to our, you said this is like a 24-year?
That's correct. 24 years.
Breakdown like what does the debt service for like over the years?
All the priority ones. Need to do the lighting. We want to do that. But this, for selecting here at the 7.8 million, you not have to do that all in one year. As Michael said, after we select which firm we're going to use, we'll go back and we might reduce this number down to 3 million, 4 million for this next.
Depending on what the projects that we're going to do.
Correct. So, we'll decide at that point which ones we want to end up doing and the money that we're going to use to pay for this, well, the money from the savings, which will mainly come from the two lighting projects, will be able to reduce our electricity costs and that money that was earmarked to pay those electricity costs will now go back to pay this company and, and associated costs with this project.
And that's correct. And it's, it's a good explanation there. Basically, 24 years doesn't work in compliance with the Act to pay for entirely from savings. So, that number needs to get to about 18 and because it's a 20-year maximum, so obviously you have some financing costs associated unless you have 7 million bucks laying around. You know, so about 18. So, realistically, to maximize your spend and Mr. Krasinski said, well, you could spend three, four, or five. It's about 5 and 1/2 million dollars is what would fund, just based on what we've done internally, you know, from moving things in and out of, of a project. So, from seven, you can feel free to spend as much as you, as much as you can to accomplish. You can add capital. The Act allows for it, but if you want to pay for this entirely by savings, it's about a 5 and 1/2 million dollar project that will be covered entirely by savings.
So, then if, if we choose to do the lighting first, which is, sounds like is where we should go.
Right.
Then that's going to, that will be the full 20, well, the 24 years will start as soon as you start that project, but then every succeeding project, the clock runs when you start the project?
That's, that's right. Every, it would start if you did another phase.
If you wait three years to do like a building envelope, okay, then that, that's not going to be on the 24-year meter. It, it could be like.
It would start when you do the, start doing the measurements.
Right, right, right.
You have to, you have to, obviously, if you're going to do a building envelope, you have to insulate to start seeing savings that are guaranteed by the ESCO.
I just need a clarification on it. Thanks, Mike. Thank you.
No problem.
And by, just so that everybody is sitting at this table understands, by whatever firm we pick, we're not committing to that bottom-line number. We're, we're just merely going to have the opportunity to choose what projects we do. So, we're not committing ourselves to anything in that blue line.
Correct. We would, we would, we, that's correct.
So, what happens though after we pick and choose what projects we're going to do if some of the other companies would have been cheaper to go that route?
Well, we were tasked to really look at the priority one level and the ECMs and if you kind of go through this grid, one of the firms kind of stands out for the bulk of it. Now, not, not every measure. If you look at every measure individually, that's not going to be the case, but if you look at, you know, lighting and exterior lighting and building envelope and priority one, you can see that one firm on the board here, CM3 is, is the lowest cost across the board. Now, that's like again, Mr. Zoll, that's not going to be the case at every building, but really, we've come through it a lot. For the, for the, most of the scenarios, it's the same company.
So, if you're picking, you pick a firm tonight and there's some, and you, you select projects that other, these other companies are, have better, that doesn't, that's not going to be relevant.
No, I mean.
If you pick a firm, you're going to do that firm with everything.
Yeah, and, and, you know, this is like the third, there was proposals that were submitted. We asked for some, you know, secondary costs and then this was really like, you know, like I said, the best-and-final offers. These are the numbers that we received.
With it being such a large project and for all the companies, what is, what are some of the factors that play in from, you know, the $3 million difference between, what was that, CM3 and let's say like ESG?
Well, you can see it's kind of different. Honeywell, if you see it, their lighting numbers outrageous. I'm not sure why their lighting number is such a big number, but it is. You know, from ESG, their priority one, which is mechanical, is a heavy number. So, that's really hurting them. So, what the scopes that they built and, you know, the pricing that they came up with, that, that's really where, what's separating those two firms dramatically from the other two firms.
Further, they gave their initial number. Yes. Property. Sharp. Typically. Project. America. So, it was up to them at that point. Thought they were a little high initial proposal. Had the offer. Back to mine.
But, but their savings is greater.
Because the cost, their project, $10 million.
Right.
Do everything. Well, that's why they're saving. Cost.
You can see the payback number's higher.
It goes down. That's why I asked Michael to find what that number means. Now, weed out some of these projects, get that project down to 5. There's going to be a new savings guarantee.
Exactly, exactly. But, none of these numbers will change. You know, these, it's just a matter of what adding and subtracting out of this grid. This is not like we're going to go into a whole new realm of numbers. These numbers are solid. You know, each of the contractors are, are holding these numbers. Again, there's no change orders on these projects too. Very important to note.
Oh, I was going to say, there's no change orders.
No change order is part of the Guaranteed Energy Savings Act. So, scopes that are in place and that, again, that's part of our contract review, you know, with your solicitor and, and our scope review, which we already done a lot of, but just making sure that at the final hour, there's nothing that's missing here. They, if, if there's something they missed and it's, and it was part of what they said they were going to do, they have to, they have.
It's on them.
Honor that number. It's on them. No change. Unless the district says we want to do something else, you can always, you, client can initiate a change order, contractor cannot.
Not simple payback. That's based on the energy savings?
That's correct. It's, it's the, the one divided by, you know, it's just the 325 into 728. That's the simple payback. So, there's.
Yeah.
We have to get that number. In order to even qualify for the project. So, obviously, there is some client. So, and that's. 5 million. That's probably the massive, most massive. Bottom line, your recommendation is CM3.
Based on numbers, you know, that's, that would be our recommendation.
If I could just, to the, to the board, and I, I'm very limited in my knowledge. I rely on people. A lot of them, but certainly when it comes to ESCOs, but I will tell you, CM3 did an ESCO for IU19 Jefferson Center and you speak to the director, executive director, it's phenomenal. These guys did an unbelievable job, really large, large project that they did as an ESCO. And it was phenomenal. No change order. Said there would be no change orders. There was not one change order. And I, I certainly would go on that recommendation. Again, I don't know these companies. I don't even know what this is, but I know that CM3, they can't say enough about them up at IU19.
And they've done a project here, Hazel.
And I, I worked here and I know we were totally satisfied. They left. Everything was taken care of.
Right.
Michael, so I'm under, part of your team with the project lead. So, you'll be able to determine where to stay in fact.
Absolutely. We're on board. We'll be involved during the project, you know, bi-weekly meetings, monthly meetings, you know, we'll be here. We're not a contract management firm. What, I mean, we're not here on-site, but we're here, high-level owners kind of meetings. We'll be totally involved, engaged with you folks. And then at the end of, once the substantial completion is, is done and that clock starts on year one, absolutely, we're tracking your data. We're with them, working with them. And then, once they submit their measurement verification that they either did satisfy the savings or did not, we will do our own independent analysis to see how it compares and then kind of go back and forth with them. We're on your side 100% throughout that process. Year one, year two, year three, all the way to year 20 unless you cancel it. You can cancel the M&amp;V service. I mean, if you're, it's a fee and so if there's a, if there's a, you know, three, four, two, three, four years down the road, you're making, you know, more than the savings. Why, you know, why continue that service? But we'll, we'll be there for you. So, that, we're not. We're part of it for the long haul.
It's also by the simple payback that Bob and Michael have talked about is bank for the buck. The idea is ultimately there's a recommendation to negotiate for to find a move with the energy service company that meets your financial morals, your borrowing morals, things of that nature, and then we work with the solicitor to make sure that the terms and conditions match the contract needs of the district. So, everything's on your side now and we're your effective agent in helping usher this thing along over the next several weeks so you have something that you're ready to go with. And applying capital is a duly allowed feature of the Act. You know, in the last several updates to the Act, they want you to be able to bring on projects that you would be normally doing through bid spec or for things of that nature and assure yourself that you won't have change orders, that you're going to have a good company that's doing the work for you and that's what we're going to be doing the next month or so.
So, when then, when this board decides on what projects we're going to do, that's, you guys will roll up your sleeves again and, okay, okay, okay. Thanks.
Every year.
Right, right.
... throughout.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Okay, great.
For now, appropriate. Do you have any other questions you can say, but I do have.
I, I think if there's any questions we can give to you now, I don't think anyone else had it.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe, we figure if we have to stay, you have.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thanks, thanks, same to you guys. Thanks for your work.
So, so let's get a motion to adjourn this, this meeting.
Don't make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo, second by Mrs. DeCosmo. Question? Is it being adjourned on favor?
Aye.
Take care, guys.
Hey, we'll bring this meeting to order Tuesday, November 20th, 6:40 PM for a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Mr. Reba, roll call.
Mr. Benomo.
Here.
Mrs. DeCosmo.
Here.
Mr. Fiume.
Here.
Mrs. Kay. Mr. Moholic.
Here.
Mrs. Scarsella.
Here.
Mr. Shemansky.
Here.
Mr. Van Hoekland.
Here.
And Mr. Zola.
Here.
Hey, I'd like to announce two executive sessions. One was held on November 13th for personnel and litigation and the other was held on November 20th, same thing, personnel and litigation. Student representative, Faitlyn Beeler.
Good evening. This, the following is the November activity report. Seniors in Visual Art III competed in the PennDOT Paint a Plow contest. This year's theme was Don't Crowd the Plow. The contest is used to promote winter driving safety as well as the showcasing of talents at the, of local high school students. All plows were featured on PennDOT's Facebook page where the public voted on fan favorite by liking the photo. The snowplow can be seen in action during the upcoming winter months around the Hazleton area. Hazleton area's Lily Noak and Alyssa Missouri claimed the District 2 to 4 Class AAA Subregional Gold Medal and advanced to PI AA tournament team. Tournament. This is the fourth consecutive year Hazleton area has been in the double finals for girls tennis, winning gold three of the four times. Maggie Anis was named Artist of the Week for WVI, WVIA as well. The class of 2019 held the Second Annual Trunk or Treat Event on October 28th for children around the area. Approximately 260 children attended and visited 23 groups of high school students and faculty members with different themes, some of games, candy, elf treats and non-edible prizes. The following honors Visual Arts students from the Arts and Humanities Academy received awards in the annual Student Day Advertising Poster Competition at the Pennsylvania Renaissance Fair. This includes Mary Louz Rodriguez, who won first place, Paige Delkouski, who won second place, and Abby Helfelfinger, as well as Kayla Martis Sofiski, both receiving honorable mentions. Students had to research and create historically correct detailed art compositions following themes, fonts and an advertising slogan for the fair. The following three students from the honors Visual Arts studios of the Arts and Humanities Academy, Acacia Bermudas, Sky Burke and Hunter Nye, had their artwork framed on and on exhibit for the entire month of October at the Hazleton Art League as part of a community art show. November 9th, Hazleton Area High School welcomed over 170 veterans to its annual Veterans Day celebration. Senior students welcomed each veteran and served a hot breakfast. Art students decorated and created ornaments to present as a gift to each veteran while the chorus and band students provided entertainment as part of the program. Mosea Bennett, a 10th grader, placed first in the Wyoming Valley Veterans Day Parade Essay Contest. Mosea and his family attended the Wyoming Valley Day Breakfast on Sunday, November 11th, 2018, where he read his essay, Why Should We Remember, Rememberate the End of World War I? Following the breakfast, he and his family marched with veterans in the Wyoming Valley Veterans Day Parade. They received a top prize of $250.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Public announcements and recognition.
Yes, at this time, Mr. Patron, would you like to do the honors?
Good evening. My pleasure to recognize one of our parent professionals, Hazleton Area High School. Few weeks back, one of our life skills students was eating lunch and Mrs. Betty Bobic looked across the table and noticed the student was in distress. She realized the student was choking on whatever the student was eating at the time. Betty, without any hesitation whatsoever, went across, performed the Heimlich maneuver and saved that student. So, it's my pleasure to recognize Mrs. Bobic here this evening.
Great job. Great.
Thank you.
We have public comment directed to the board.
One second, I'm acknowledging. Just, I, I attended the breakfast, the Veterans Day breakfast, guys, and I know Linda, you were there and Jackie, you were there. I, I mean, it was, it was fantastic. It's our, the third year that, that I attended, Mr. Patron, fourth year that I attended and I got to tell you guys, it just gets better every year. I didn't think it was possible to do a great job. The students were so professional, courteous. They treated all, all the guests with such respect. I mean, I actually saw tears in the eyes of a lot of the vets and I, I think it's great. I gotta give you, you know, I'm going to give you a round of applause. Just mention one more thing, Bobby. Tony Carrato, are you out there? Oh, okay. You got blasted. You got baptism under fire with a snowstorm in November for only being here a few months and, you know, I, I got to tell your staff, and I know you were out because as I passed some of the schools, I saw you actually out there with, with your staff. Schools were cleaned like within two days or so of, of a huge snowstorm like. So, thank you and please tell your staff, you know, we appreciate all that effort. Did you do all the schools this year? Which is, which is a big change because most of the time we hire subcontractors as well as our own, but so, so baptism under fire, buddy. Good, good job. Thank you.
Great job, Mr. Carrato. And, Mr. Patron, I've heard nothing but great comments about that Veterans Day celebration. Mr. Zola said, good job. So, public comments directed to the board on board, agenda items only. Hey, we need a motion to approve the board meeting minutes from the regular meeting October 23rd.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo, second by Mr. Moholic. Question? Reba?
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have a motion pass.
Pressures report for October 2018. Motion by Mr. Benomo. Treasurers' Report for October 2018, motion by Mr. Benomo. Second by Mr. Shemansky on the question. Mr. Reba?
All in favor of approving the Treasurers' Report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it, motion passed.
Drupinger?
Okay, on your agenda, there are a number of items that we need to fill in some blanks for you. Uh, so number 39 on the agenda, letter A for Freeland Elementary Middle School should say, or read Timothy Mahovich. Letter B for Heights Terrace Elementary Middle School, position reposted. Letter C for West Hazelton Elementary Middle School, there's two, Diane Maholik and Ilabel Vasquez. The, uh, three people that we're gonna bring aboard this evening for approval. Item number 40 has a blank for the ESCO project and, to my understanding, CM3 would be the recommended
That's what
Item number 55. The grand total should be $24,074.40. Invertive Operating Company, B-E-R-I-T-I-V, operating company should fit in the next space. Item number 87. It should read, recommend board appoint Dustin Posher to the position of an elementary school health and physical education teacher, crossing out middle, could read elementary. And item number 93. Instead of Valley Elementary Middle School, it should be Drums Elementary Middle.
So do we have any comment at this time on these, this addendum changes or additions?
Thank you. Uh, on your agenda, on page one, approve items one through 24.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Scarsella on the question.
Just for five, six, and 13, are we gonna add that stipulation we discussed in executive session?
Yes, we can add that also. Uh, with the addition of that would be, um, for those individuals to also receive CPR first aid.
On 18, congratulations, what a tremendous accomplishment here by this group of young students. Obviously, our highest gratitude to the, to the teachers that are training these students. Not sure you could get a better opportunity to do play a better show than that. So great. On number 22, can you, does anybody know what this linkage referral agreement is? Not.
Don't have that.
Linkage referral agreement between
Number 22.
Yeah, Mr. Maholik, I'm drawing a blank on that. I apologize.
Did Chris approve it yet?
That's okay. I mean, I, it's, I'm assuming it's something with maybe the staff team or something.
Has it gone to your office, Chris, here where I believe that isn't my profession, I'm not Okay.
Maybe, should we remove that?
I just don't wanna, I mean.
Can we remove that?
Remove that?
Let's, let's remove it and table it, table it.
Yeah, and I don't think there's any problem at all with, I was just wondering.
Yeah, and I, and I apologize, I don't have the information.
We could just remove it from this.
Yep. Thank you.
Guys, 23 would fall under five, six, 13, 23.
Right.
Yeah.
No, enter.
We have a first and a second, are those, those items?
Yes. Mr. Reba?
Yeah.
Items one to 24 excluding 22, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it, motion passed.
Under Special Education, ESL Alternative Education, approve items 25 through 30 with one motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cosmo on the question. Reba?
Numbers 25 to 30, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it, motion passed.
On the question, I, I know it's, it's late, but did Attorney Evans give us her approval on that? The number 29. It's pending if Attorney Evans is
Yes, it'll be pending her approval, but I don't know.
Does anybody know if Attorney Evans approved it? She did? Okay, then there is no question.
Drupinger?
English Language Development, ELD, number, item number 31, recommend board approve.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cosmo, question? Reba?
Number 31, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it, motion passed.
Under Nutrition, approve items 32 and 33.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Maholik on the question. Reba?
Numbers 32 and 33, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it, motion passed.
Under Technology, approve items 34 through 36.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Zola, second by Benomo on the question. Reba?
Numbers 34 to 36, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it, motion passed.
Approve items 37 through 40 with one motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Zola, second by, who seconded it?
We have Bobby.
Mr. Maholik, question?
Just a comment.
Okay.
Tony, again, we said it during the committee meetings, but, uh, Mr. Reba went to a state auction and 37, went one through six, saved the district a ton of money on vehicles by buying surplus vehicles from the state. We know that most of the vehicles that we buy there, we have, we get a lot of use out of them, years and years, actually. Going back to the last 10, we still have some of them on the road. So, thanks, we're, we're, Tony, we're, yeah, okay, thanks, Tony.
Good job.
And do, do we have to make a motion for 40, make official?
No, it's within CM3 in that.
Yes. So we have a motion and a second, yes, question.
37 to 40, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Saying on 39C?
I just have a motion passed.
Another relevant.
Still on page six, under Security, approve items 41 through 42.
Motion.
One motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo. Second, all second, question? Reba?
Numbers 41 and 42, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I just have it, motion passed.
On page seven, on Student Activities, Athletics and Extracurricular, approve items 43 through 44 with one motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Miss Scarsella. Question? Reba?
Numbers 43 and 44, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it, motion passed.
Under Finance, approve items 45 through 60 with one motion.
Motion.
Second by Mrs. DeCosmo, second by Mr. Maholik, question? Reba?
Items 45 to 60, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it, motion passed.
Item number 61, motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Scarsella on the question. Reba?
Number 61, A, B, and C, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No on C.
I just have it, motion passed.
On page 10, Superintendent's Agenda, approve items 62 through 75.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeCosmo on the question. Reba?
Numbers 62 to 75, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it, motion passed.
Page 11, approve items 76 through 88 with one motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Scarsella. Question? Mr. Reba?
Item 76 to 88, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it, motion passed.
On page 12, approve items 89 through 100 with one motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo. Second, all second. On the question? Reba?
Numbers 89 to 100, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it, motion passed.
Tony, on, I'm sorry, 50, on the addendum sheet, did you just include that 55 in, in with with the other numbers or we're gonna do that separately?
That was, uh, included.
Yes, that was
That was on the agenda with blanks. We filled the blanks.
I'm sorry, okay. Can I change my vote on 55? A no on 55?
Yes.
I just have a few questions at our next meeting or executive session.
Okay. Mr. Drupinger?
Yes, sir.
Is there, uh, any of our new hires in the audience that you're aware of?
Yes, you are a new hiree to the district, if you could please stand.
Congratulations, good luck.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard. Anyone from the audience wish to be heard? Anything else from board?
If I may just, uh,
Wait.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Go right ahead, Barry. Just while Barry's making his way up there, if I, I see our friends from Food Service here, we, uh, do we have a date for, or are we doing the senior, we're doing the senior system?
December 2nd, December 2nd.
December 2nd.
Yes.
Wonderful. Senior citizen breakfast, I see, Jackson here, they always give us a good plug, so wonderful.
Good.
Someone must be reaching that age.
Won't be serving, will be served.
All right, those of you who know me know I wear several hats. Tonight, I'm here wearing the hat of the producer for the 15th Annual Sounds of the Season concert, which we're holding at the Willsey Center. Real brief history on that is that approximately 15 years ago, well, exactly 15 years ago, I got together with another gentleman, Danny Demalfi, and I said, "We really need to do something for this town to showcase our Hazelton Philharmonic Orchestra," which, uh, is, is outstanding organization. And we decided that, at that time, we would put a concert together and, and require that it was a black tie optional concert. So we were, we were really taking a chance for our area and seeing what we could do. Uh, little did we know that we'd still be doing this 15 years ago. So I'm here tonight twofold. One is to invite everyone to the concert, but also to thank the board for giving us the opportunity this year, uh, to, again, continue at, at the Willsey Center, which, um, those who also know me know that I'm a, a technical director at the Willsey Center, and I think it's probably the best venue in northeastern Pennsylvania. Uh, very quickly, uh, too, the, the northeast, or the Hazelton Philharmonic Orchestra, uh, are the only ones that get anything out of this concert. We have, uh, W Y L N has been taping the concert now for 15 years to the generosity of the Gans family. We received nothing. It actually cost us a lot of money, especially on a weekend because we go and, and do this. And the way that came about was the first year we contacted, uh, Pennsylvania Cable Network in Harrisburg and said to them, "We have a show that we'd like you to run during the holiday season." And they said, "Yeah, so does everybody else, and, but send us a copy and, and we'll take a look at it." About three days later, I got a call that stated, not only were they gonna run it, but they were gonna leave their, their holiday programming off with that show. Now, uh, the nice thing is every year they call me and say, "When's the show? How long is it?" And give us a time. And last year, it was featured on their pay-per-view channel. Uh, we bring in professional sound and lighting people for this show. Um, again, the only one that gets anything from this is the Hazelton Philharmonic Orchestra, and, and our sole purpose was to keep them alive. Uh, if you're familiar with the area, you'll know that the, uh, Philharmonic in Scranton is out of business. Uh, they were a paid professional orchestra and they're gone. Uh, this is a purely volunteer, so we get together and we do this show. We added some other local talent and we found out that that seems to be the trick to putting people in a seat up at the Willsey Center. We draw close to 400 or 500 people for that show, which is pretty good. Bob could tell you that. We've had a lot of shows that didn't see nearly that type of, an audience. But anyway, the other thing I wanted to do is especially thank the people that are up at the, uh, castle, the staff, the maintenance staff, um, the extra security that are brought in, the extra maintenance people for the night of the show. They have been outstanding. We've been at three other venues. And I will honestly say that we get the most support from the castle and from the folks in the district. And I want to thank you all for that. And again, please, if you can make it, come to the show. You won't be disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, the board? I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and, uh,
Beat me to it.
Okay, he wants that.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Benomo. Second by Mr. Zola.
Mr. Zola, I see.